Welcome to the February 11th, 2020 City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Prokhorov Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Councilman Laquiro.
Holy Spirit, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people, to discern our future together. We are a diverse body, brought together by the same spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us, and bestow upon us your grace and wisdom. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, approval of the revised agenda?
I'll move approval of the agenda as revised, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Dissention? Questions? Approves the agenda. Special presentations from Oakland County Prosecutor Jessica Cooper.
Mr. Mayor, we are honored today to have our Oakland County Prosecutor Jessica Cooper here in Hazel Park to address Mayor and Counsel tonight, and speak to the residents of Hazel Park. Ms. Cooper was elected prosecutor in 2008. She is a former circuit judge, a former judge with the Court of Appeals. She's a graduate of Wayne State Law School, and she is an adjunct professor at the University of Michigan Law School and Michigan State University Law School.
Welcome.
We're very pleased to welcome her today.
Thank you. I'm gonna maybe move this, okay? I'm used to holding this, and I'm a little short for someone who's done all of these things. So I wanted to talk with you and be able to explain what a prosecutor does, because it's very confusing to a lot of people. And when we talk about the separation of powers, or we even talk about criminal law reform, I'm very surprised that sometimes, maybe it's because I was a judge, and sometimes people still address me as that, because that was my first name for a while. But a lot of the things that we're talking about in terms of, and you'll see it over and over again, particularly in a campaign season, when we're talking about criminal law, we're talking about things that are purely the providence of the judiciary. So I think I'll start out by telling you basically what we don't do. We don't sentence people, all right? I don't put people in jail or prison. We don't, we don't set bonds. And we talk about these local bonds, and that's gonna come here. I think you're gonna hear a lot about the setting of bonds. That, again, is the province of the judiciary. One of the things that we also don't do is, we don't process local ordinances. Those are the ordinances that this esteemed body passes, and we only deal with state law. So many times, we'll get these phone calls from the newspapers, and they'll say, "Well, what are you doing about this case?" I'm going, "What case? What case? I don't..." And it is in the local courts and in the local systems. So let me, let me tell you what I do do. What I am is basically the CEO or the managing partner of an extremely large law firm. That's what my title is. I manage all of these 95 prosecutors. And my job, with a $23 million budget, is to make certain that all of the courts are covered, and that those prosecutors are trained, and that they're trained to be fair. So you wanna take a look at a defense attorney, the defense attorney's job in any particular case is to represent his or her client. The job of a prosecutor is to represent justice, and to be just, and to be fair. And so what happens when we go into the courtroom, if there is a glaring error, even if it's a judicial error, even if it's a defense error, that case has to be tried again. And if that case has to be tried again, I have to put witnesses through that. And so it's very important that we proceed in a just and a fair manner. And so one of the things that I do, and I heard that you talked about the fact that I've done a lot of teaching in the law schools, but the first thing that I teach any prosecutor is ethics. Do the right thing. That's what I can be very proud of. In my office, I have some very fine young people who do that. So we teach them, and that's one of the things we do. We teach them with ballistics. We teach them DNA. We teach them court proceedings. And while you see all of these things on television, sometimes it's very tedious, sometimes it's very long, sometimes it's very involved. So when it comes to the police department, and we're part of law enforcement, the way in which we divide that is that the police department does the investigation. So here's another thing that we don't do. We're not the people who investigate. The police agencies, whether it's your agency here, whether it's the Sheriff's Department, whether sometimes we're dealing with the federal, sometimes we're dealing with the DNA, we have 47 different police agencies that we deal with, they do the investigation. If they need us, because there's a great emergency, we'll go in and we'll help them write search warrants, but that's their case. When they come to us, then it becomes our case. And if we need help from the police department, there'll be officers in charge, or they'll help us in that particular case. And so that is that relationship. And I think in Oakland County, we make that division very clear. I don't get in their business, they don't get in my business, but we do help each other. We get along quite well. And so that is basically some of the things that we do. It's a long and involved process. One of the things that I think that makes Oakland County very different is, I personally believe, and I have worked at this for the past 11 years, now I'm going on 12, is that I believe that part of my job is to help prevent crime. And part of the community here helps prevent crime. And so what I have done is I have gone into the schools. And I don't mean I go in on occasion. I mean I'm there two or three times a week, different schools all over this county. Paul comes, I go. We've done, in 10, 11 years, over 500 presentations. Because the most important thing for all of the community, for all of you, is that I tell those young people, and sometimes there are 100, 200, 300 kids at a time, "I'm coming to see you, because I don't ever want you to come to see me. You come to see me, you're in trouble. You come to see me, perhaps you're a victim." And so we talk. We talk about ethnic intimidation. We talk about safety on the computers. We talk about false reports of terrorism. We talk about anything and everything. And I think the fact that I'm there in person, you know, I have a lot of faith in these young people. That's the way we're gonna change things. That's the way it works. And in Oakland County, you live in a relatively safe place. It's much safer here, because you have the community involvement. So for me, I think the most important thing that happens in the area of criminal law is community involvement. What I, you don't see me in the limelight, you don't see me on the televisions, but you will see me in the schools. You will see me in the senior centers. And you will see me, sometimes in the churches, talking about domestic violence. The way in which we prevent crime is we talk with each other, we have the activities of a community, and that's why it's so good here, because I'm always welcomed. I'll go when there are three people, if I think that that can help clear up a situation, make an impression on a teenager. So that is essentially what we do. Not necessarily exciting, and I have been known to be called boring, but that's okay. I think that's what the prosecutors should be. We do a lot of work. It's a lot of hard work. We're on duty 24/7. If you need us, we're there. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I'm gonna put this up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, prosecutor.
Takes us to civic announcements. You have Oakland County Commissioner Helene Zach here. Welcome, Helene.
Welcome. Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I do wanna remind people that the census is coming out at the beginning of April, and we are looking for about 1,000 workers for the census. And they are willing to pay somewhere around $22, $23 an hour. So if anybody has some extra time, you can go to mytalent.com or census.gov and apply to work on the census in Oakland County. It's really important that people fill out our forms, because every person who's not counted, it costs a local community $1,800 a year for resources, times 10. And these are things that fund community services and so forth. And it is a safe way to be counted, too. I don't want people to be fearful of filling out the forms, but it's really critical for all of us. I also wanna let you know that Oakland County is watching the coronavirus closely. We have had five instances that I'm aware of where we've tested, they've all been negative so far. If you want more up-to-date information, you can go to the Oakland County website, www.oakgov.com/health, and they have current information that you should be aware of. This week is our State of the County speech tomorrow night. I'm really looking forward to it. Already, our county exec has announced two programs that he's gonna be talking more about. I did know about County Health Initiative, that I'm so excited about. We will be partnering with two nonprofit agencies. One is Honor Health, and the other is Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency. We will be building out space for these community partners to be housed in both of our health department locations. The closest one to here is on Greenfield Road and 11 and 1/2 mile, and then there's one at the county complex. So when people walk in to our office for flu shots, or Women Infant Children Services, or other different services, and they have some medical issues, we will have Honor Health providing medical, dental, social work, counseling, right there, as well as OLSA, if you need some wraparound, financial counseling, housing assistance, it's gonna be one-stop shopping. It's really very forward-thinking. I've wanted this. You know, I'm on my 18th year, and, you know, been hoping, dreaming about this opportunity. It's really gonna make a difference for many of our residents who are underinsured, or not insured, or don't have time. You know, presently, our public health nurses do an amazing job trying to work with people walking through the door and make linkages to other resources, but people don't follow through. So it's really a very exciting opportunity. There was another program announced tonight, today, by Oakland County Executive Colter, and it's called Oakland 80. Governor Whitmer talked about Michigan, state of Michigan 60. And the goal of Oakland 80 is to try and get all eligible working adults to have some type of post-high school secondary education, so that they will meet the needs of jobs that are out there. Right now, in Oakland County, 61% of our adult residents meet that goal. You know, they're shooting for 60% throughout the state of Michigan. We're shooting for 80%. And this is a very exciting collaboration between Oakland University, Wayne State, the community colleges, unions, other educational training. So, you know, they're meeting, talking about, "How can we do this better?" So I think it's a really wonderful opportunity for our residents, again. Other things that I'm working on, I've had multiple meetings on mental health. I had a situation I intervened on, you know, crisis situation. It's very hard to access services, and we need more navigation, need to make it simpler. So I did meet with all the different leads of agencies last week, and we're working on it. Had multiple meetings, conversations on transit. One of the places, you know, talked to an organization yesterday that has on-demand technology, working with public entities, like you use an Uber or Lyft, but, you know, it helps scheduling of group shuttles, buses, and so forth. There's a lot of creative ideas spinning out there. So we're looking at all that. And heard a wonderful speaker. Board of Commissioners had Michelle Duster, who's the great-granddaughter of Ida B. Wells, who was abolitionist suffragette. And she came in and did fabulous presentation that I saw this morning at Oakland Community College and Oakland University last night. And probably about 200 people showed at these two different events. And I learned a lot, you know, about, you know, voting and things like that. It was really very, very special. And that's all our celebration of 100 years of voting. And finally, this is the 200-year anniversary of Oakland County. There's a whole bicentennial group coming together. One of the immediate things happening is that Oakland County is purchasing 20,000 oak trees that will be distributed throughout the county, and there will be free oak trees coming to Hazel Park this spring. So...
Already put our application in.
Thank you. I know someone that's managing this project. So make sure that we apply, because I wanna see oak trees here. Any questions for me?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I personally haven't had that opportunity. Often, if there is an opportunity, there was one initiative that I visited, it's My Career Quest, and this was in the fall, and it was several counties, there were, I think, 11,000 students that went to the suburban showcase. And it was unbelievably exciting, where they went to different pods of potential careers. For example, if you're interested in aviation, and I know Hazel Park participated in that, you know, took bus, or if you're interested in healthcare, so that kids can sample different opportunities. This is high schoolers. So I am happy to work with someone if they wanna contact me and help connect to resources like that. I do agree that we wanna have people in the right fit, and that there's, you know, there's a lot of resources out there, and I'm happy to work with the school system if someone reaches out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Helen. Any more civic announcements? Anyone from counsel? I have one. I just wanted to let everybody know that on the 13th, at the Rex Center, between 4:00 and 7:00, is an I-75 update. We met with them last Monday, and I think we had a pretty good discussion, but I don't think that they were minimal in helping us yet.
Again, Mr. Mayor's correct. I hope that everyone shows up to this meeting and takes a look at what their plans are. We know these things have to be done, however, their timetable and the way they wanna take down three different bridges at the same time is somewhat...
Deadlock our city.
...and is not good for the city of Hazel Park, so...
We need all the support at the Rex Center to voice their concerns and opinions to this MDOT, to help support our fight to leave one of the bridges up while they're doing the other two bridges, and so we don't lose transportation across the freeway, which, as we all know, separates our town. We try to make the best of it, the best we can. Like to see what we can do in helping them see the light, if you don't mind. The 13th, Thursday, 4:00 to 7:00.
Thursday, 4:00 to 7:00, Hazel Park Recreation Department, 620 West Woodward Heights.
It's an open house, so you don't have to come for that entire period of time.
Right. It's not...
Come as needed, or come as you are available.
Yeah, there's no meeting or program or anything like that. It's just stop in and look at the plans.
Okay, any other civic announcements from up here? Takes us to public discussion. I have a couple slips here. Brian Lee Lane? Brian? How you doing?
I was just wondering, I had submitted an application for being on the Planning Commission, and it was about a year ago, and haven't heard anything, so I didn't know if they were moving forward with doing nominations for that, or...
We're looking at some things right now, and we'll let some people know. I don't even know if we've, when was the last appointment we had?
We have three appointments that are up, and we will have three more appointments that expire after next month.
Yeah. So if you want to, just resubmit.
I think we already have it on. We have it, we have it, so we just need to resubmit.
I didn't know if we had a refresh you could hit.
He's already resubmitted once before.
What is it exactly we're waiting on?
Well, the administration can make recommendations at the next meeting, if that is your pleasure.
That would be, that would be suggested. I think we have recommendations coming to the next meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay, then I will do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Robertson, another of us slipping. And just for record, anybody that's here for the Neighborhood Enterprise Zones, we're gonna open up a public hearing, and you'd be able to speak at that point.
Jesse Robertson, 23353 Hoover Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I have come before you tonight as a member of the Hazel Park Historical Commission, and to address something that occurred during the special meeting on the 28th of January 2020. At the very end of the meeting, after the entire posted agenda had been gone through, and after the counsel had gone to executive session and returned from it, one member of the council made a motion to suspend the Hazel Park Historical Commission, pending an investigation being called for. This gave me deja vu. This was very much like what had happened nearly a year ago, on April 9th, 2019. But this time around, there were no cooler heads to prevail. The motion was seconded and passed. So as of these past two weeks, I have been and continue to be suspended as a historical commissioner. As I did mention on the same subject back last July, this sort of move was extreme and unprecedented. And nothing, absolutely nothing, has happened to make that any less extreme. And the only thing to make it less unprecedented is the fact that the same two council members were involved in the motion before last year. However, a few things have also been different this time. And it is because of those that I am here before you to illuminate upon, because it is critically important for the residents of the city of Hazel Park, be aware of them. For the residents to be kept in the dark would be dishonest, and performing them a great disservice. First off, I will note that the way the suspension passed was far different. On April 9th, 2019, then Mayor Amy Aubrey had initiated the subject during a period, the City Council meeting, that was normally open for new business, as would be expected. And after a motion for suspension was made by Councilmember Alyssa Sullivan, there was discussion, and interjection was made by the city attorney present for that meeting. And all the residents of the city got to watch on live television, as the attorneys lessened in the history of the city of Hazel Park, brought the council back to their senses. On January 28th of 2020, however, the condition was rather different. Rather than bringing up the subject during the period for new business, as would be standard, it was left undiscussed until after the de facto end of the meeting. When the council left for executive session, the TV broadcast was ended, and in fact, audio equipment was removed, and the audience largely left. I know this because I was there, and left at that time as well. So to recap, at the last meeting, rather than start with asking anything of a member of the Historical Commission that had been present in the room for the entire meeting up until the executive session, the subject's motion was reserved. Until any such members were absent, the microphones were removed, and in fact, the meeting was no longer being broadcast. And it was only later that it would show up online as part of an audio-only record, later posted to YouTube. Because of this lack of broadcasting, I would not be surprised if many of those tuned in and watching this meeting on television right now would be learning of this for the very first time. In fact, I myself wasn't even informed and learned what had happened until the Friday after that meeting, when I received this letter informing me of my suspension. This makes you question how much exactly the city is dedicated to transparency. Secondly, the conditions that were cited as reason for such an extreme and unjustifiable action were something that actually involved the Hazel Park Historical Society. While the casual viewer at home might not catch the difference, this change means everything. The Hazel Park Historical Commission is a city body appointed by the City Council and answerable directly only to the City Council, and given support by the city administration. The Hazel Park Historical Society is a non-governmental organization, also known as an NGO. Specifically, it is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, and the Hazel Park Historical Society has no functional connection to the city government. It is very key to note that while I am a member of the Hazel Park Historical Commission, although a suspended one, I am not in any way a member of the Hazel Park Historical Society. So this means that even though I had absolutely no involvement with the activities that were cited as cause for the suspension, I was still suspended. To repeat, the City Council suspended commissioners for an activity that they did not partake in, and without even talking to them first. This makes you question how much exactly the city is dedicated to fairness and justice. In light of all this, one would be surprised if the residents of the city were not concerned. The City Council not only acted to take punitive measure against volunteers that had nothing to do with an activity that aroused their ire, but they also took steps to conceal this action. And above all, this action appears to have been taken very lightly, when it should have been anything but. To illustrate, by suspending the Hazel Park Historical Commission, the city has opted to permanently tarnish the reputation of all seven historical commissioners, with the ignoble mark of having been suspended. This is something that can never be taken back. Even if the suspension were to be lifted, that will not change the fact that the suspension happened in the first place. There is no change in the past, only the future. Hazel Park is a city... Hazel Park is a city where many great things are happening. And there are countless individuals. Who are willing to donate their time and volunteer to make all these great things happen. However, when things like this occur, the council makes a statement. That any such attempt to make the city a better place carries a risk to one's reputation. This is tragic and I do look forward to the time when this isn't so. And when the city council can fully be on board with those to strive to make this city great and ensure that great things keep happening in the city of Hazel Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else for public discussion? Like to come out from talk. End public discussion. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
For the record, I would like to speak to the comments made by the last speaker. First of all, I would like to say that at no time was anything conducted in the dark. This was conducted at public meeting. A record of that was made, a record of that is available for anybody who wishes to see that record. For the record, the historical commission was not suspended as individuals, but as a body until such time as the city council can conduct an investigation into the matter revolving the historical museum.
I was going to bring it up on our new business.
Sure.
Brought it up anyway. I think that maybe we need to have a. Two council people and city attorney go over the commissioners. Position of that board and make a determination. We shouldn't linger to sign. Whether or not they can continue to serve on that board.
I think what we're waiting for.
Back to recommendation.
Uh, I think what we're waiting for is a resolution of the museum issue. That matter is properly to be handled before the city and the school district.
All right, well, take a look. Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda. I'll move approval of the consent agenda items one through six.
Support.
Any dissension discussion on counts on the consent agenda? We have approval of a business license at two four one one zero John R. Doug's Delight.
Yay.
They have a business license and. Approval of a purchase of a vacant lot at four sixty West Maxwell to adjacent to one of the other residents there to add to their property. They purchased that and that takes us to the, I think what a lot of people are here for. The neighborhood enterprise zones. And we'll open up the public hearing. If you have any comments or questions about your neighborhood enterprise zones, I know that a lot of people got the piece in the mail. Please step up and give a couple minute comment or question.
We haven't had dinner yet, so I want to go first. Bethany Holland, according to recent correspondence from the city of Hazel Park, I now reside at three zero five West George, but hey, that's okay. I'd like to start, our city attorney, Ms. Schwartz is not here tonight. And I would like to publicly express my condolences to her and her family and her loved ones. And I will do so in person, the first opportunity I have. So December twenty sixth, two thousand nineteen, a special council meeting was held. An intent to establish an NEZ was approved. I received notice February fifth at my principal address and a letter to occupant at my other property on the eighth. Today is the eleventh. Several neighbors advised of receiving notice yesterday. Others have not received any notice at all. If impacted owners in Japan, Canada, New York, Virginia, California, Illinois and Missouri received notice, they probably didn't have enough time to send a representative here tonight nor make inquiries to administration. NEZ isn't controversial. It's not necessarily a bad thing. However, as this was never discussed during last year's master land use plan, the work studies for use outside the desired downtown and principal shopping district, I'm wondering why now? We never discussed giving tax breaks to new construction or developers. And as the overwhelming majority of existing homes in the proposed NEZ areas failed to meet the qualifying financial threshold. This is clearly intended to benefit developers. And again, that's not necessarily a bad thing. My neighborhood worked hard to assist the city in removing blighted properties with the goal have buildable lots available for new single family construction. The number of vacant lots in the southwest corner of Hazel Park is testament to our success. So who owns the vacants? City owns eight, Landcare owns one, My Town Properties own five. Andy Meisner, while in his capacity as the treasurer owns seven. Long Term IRA LLC, they own four. And Adam Garden owns nine, nine, nice word. Adam Garden purchased dozens of properties in Hazel Park last year. He attempted to spot zone condos on East Madge and East Myers. His main argument for why this should be permitted was he couldn't turn a big enough profit with single family home construction. He failed. The eight Adam Garden lots on West Harry, and I should add, I don't know that he actually owns them now, but they're tied with him somehow. They have neighbors concerned about this proposed NEZ that it could bring condo gate to West Hayes. I'd like to share some additional statistics in going through every parcel that was listed, every Sidwell that was in the packet. East Bernard, between Highland and Caldonia, there are eleven Sidwells, so that's unique addresses. Three are owner occupied, seven are rentals, one is a county owned lot. East Hayes between John R. and Highland, thirteen. Four are owner occupied, seven are rentals, one is a county owned lot, one is owned by the city. West Evelyn, that's you, George. This is between Ford and West End and anybody that drives the area will know this is the corner with that massive garden. So there's thirty three properties, sixteen are owned with a few like George that have multiple vacants attached to them. Fifteen are rentals and two are city owned lots. So clearly we aren't hurting for additional rental housing. If this NEZ list is approved, I would ask that Sidwell two eight two five three five four six zero zero one seven. Physical address of three one five West Muir be included with the rest of its block. It doesn't look good for Landcare's preferred developer to be excluded. Also, I ran across two rentals that are claiming one hundred percent homestead exemption. Please let me know who gets the addresses. In conclusion, we have worked hard to create buildable lots. We've worked hard to create opportunity. Although I'm not opposed to giving developers a tool to help keep taxes affordable to new stakeholders. I'm opposed to multi unit housing in all but the Saint Mary's campus and along East George between Maryland to Quender. Unfortunately, going before the ZBA is not enough protection to prevent another Adam Garden type scheme from happening in the proposed NEZ. I'd ask the NEZ be restricted to the Saint Mary's campus and East George between Maryland to Quender. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public hearing? Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come up. Just need your name and address for the record, George.
Probably don't need this, I've got loud mouth. Uh, my name is George Laquettish.
We need you to speak in, the people at home.
Recorded.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is George Laquettish, I live at three twenty three West Evelyn. And I'm suspicious of governments passing anything like this. And my curious, my first question is, what is, who can tell me what is the intention of this? Beth mentioned benefiting developers, what is the benefit to the neighborhood? Is there anybody, can anybody tell me that?
The idea behind the NEZ is that it's, it does spur development. It also raises the home values of people located within the district. That's a tangible benefit for everyone within the district. And those people that might be getting new builds right now, based on our tax base, might be paying between five thousand and sixty, five hundred dollars a year in taxes. This reduces it for a certain number of years. So you don't get houses that are also built and then people that just leave them behind because they can't afford what the taxes.
So it's an effort to keep the property taxes down on the new builds?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, let me look at my notes here.
While you look at your notes, I just want to clarify too. It maybe, yes, it helps encourage a developer to develop. But you have to remember that developer is going to sell that home to somebody. So the intent is to help the homeowner that purchases that that building.
Okay, all right. I heard about this at the same time, the rumor mill hit me. And that's, somebody told me that there was an effort to sell a Nagy Park and develop it. I'm assuming that's just a rumor.
I haven't heard that one.
Just somebody talking to somebody on the, on the.
Nothing like that's been discussed.
Okay, I mean, I just, I just heard that at the same, within two days of getting the letter of this other development.
You'll still have that open space behind your house, George.
Believe me, I've got an open space.
We can't sell a park.
Back, I want to keep.
Here's the thing, city council, city government cannot sell a park without a vote of the people. Right, so there's no worries about that unless it goes on a ballot initiative to get, and you got to have approval. Go through all the language to have it put on. And if they, at that point, you have a timeframe to discuss or debate whether you have a petition to avoid that from going on. And then it goes back to the vote, the people.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's not even, there's no, not even any discussion of that. There's, there's a.
We haven't even talked about it, I would just explain the process.
Oh, you're correct. They can't just sell a park, a park requires a vote of the people.
Kind of figured that, I was just, like I said, it all came about at the same time.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
And then my only other comment, I would like to reinforce something that Beth said is. You know, to me Hazel Park is a community of small houses, wonderfully located. And I'm very much against multiple family buildings. And very much in favor of individual family dwellings with yards. So I just, I, that's, I just wanted, probably a lot of people feel the same way about it.
The, the primary purpose of the NEZ is not to change this, to allow for big residential units. Basically, what's proposed, especially on the south end, is to deal with infill lots.
Single owner home occupants.
Right, everything is single owner home occupancy.
Even, even the proposed one by Saint Mary's is single family attached owner. So that's basically, but again, it's a requirement as it would be owner occupied as well. So making sure that there's not a bunch of rentals. We clearly have enough rentals, no one would argue that fact. The, the other part is, is yeah, we're not looking to create the situation where you get eight thousand or you know, a big. Row houses in the middle of a block, that's not what's being proposed at all.
So basically this will have no effect on basic property taxes of existing people, but it will help with the development of the new property.
To help offset a percentage, up to fifteen.
For a period of years.
Yeah. Between eight and eight, between eight and fifteen years.
Yeah, it's got to be between six and fifteen years and basically we're looking at no more than eight for any of us.
To reaffirm what Amy said, this also helps make housing more accessible to new homeowners.
Sure.
So when we're doing this new development, you have the ability to get people into those homes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
John Kovar, three seven five West Evelyn. The discount of the taxes, how long is that going to last, you say fifteen years? What if they move in two years? What happens to the?
Goes with the house.
It stays with the house?
Yes, sir. Between six and fifteen years.
And what kind of.
Depending on the deal.
Discount are we going to do?
It's based upon the value of the home that's built as well as the size of the home. There's, there's an equation, I believe, Jeff, that you have for this.
Well, there's an equation, but basically the equation doesn't really mean anything because it's just perspective. But yeah, the idea is it'll be between the tax, it, it's a significant discount, but at some point, a year, three years before the period ends, it goes from five eights to three fours to seven eights to payment in full. To get people to acclimated to what the cost is because it will be substantial in the realm, especially if values keep going up and we just got to report the values continue to rise. It'll be like sixty five hundred dollars a year potentially for someone who's buying or buying a new home, which is almost a second mortgage payment per month.
Has this been tested somewhere else that you're using this as a, as a format?
The, it exists in places, it exists in Detroit, it exists in Traverse City, it exists in Mount Pleasant. Sometimes it's used for specific developments. The idea here was not only for the development by Saint Mary's, but to spur some additional home building at the south end, as Ms. Holland discussed, in areas where it might be suitable to see some additional growth in more owner occupants on those streets.
Well, has it performed?
Amy, do you?
I, I can speak for Detroit. I used to work for the city of Detroit and I worked on NEZs there. It worked very well in the city of Detroit. On occasion, developers would come back and request for, I think there's provision to extend if it's needed. But it does work very well because if you consider the cost, I think if you do the math, a new two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, the, the taxes could be up to nine thousand dollars. Which is a significant, it, it's absolutely, yeah. We're, because our.
Birmingham or this is.
No, that's, that's, that's in Hazel Park because that's, we're used to a lower tax bill because our, our taxes have been capped. You know, if you've been in your home for a long time, probably and hardly prevent your taxes from going up. But with new construction, those taxes start out at a much higher rate, which is a bit of sticker shock. You can see right now, you wouldn't want to buy that house once you heard what the tax bill was. So that is exactly what we're trying to do is help make it more affordable. And to cut down on a little bit at sticker shock so that, because as the property values are increasing in the, in our community, we want people to buy those houses, we don't want them to be built and then sit empty. So this is a tool to help make sure that we can get people into those homes so that you have neighbors, you have occupied homes.
It's an equitable value is the issue. Prop上游way and Headley has stagnated our whole economy in the state of Michigan. It does, and it also hurts. We've always talked about Prop上游way and Headley, but it also hurts the young people that are going out and trying to buy a home, start a family. And they're already, they're already pushed to the limits with how much they can spend. And then you add a big tax burden on top of that. Where the state of Michigan should actually look at changing some parts of Prop, of Headley and Prop上游way to make it more fair and equitable across the board for all ages and all sectors. So everybody can pay their fair share. So we're, so.
You're running for governor to take care of that?
I'd like to. But anyways, here's the thing. We got a bunch of empty lots. We have some homes that may need to be redone, who knows? But really, we're focusing on infilled housing. And a percentage of something is better than a percentage of nothing.
As long as it's not multiple family dwellings.
I don't want to see either. We don't want to.
Family, the, the type of development, I believe, is irrelevant for NEZ. The NEZ, it's, I think those are kind of two separate issues. So we as a, as a body have expressed before that we, we don't support sticking a bunch of condos like in, you know.
Infill.
In, in the infill lot, so.
Buddy up here is a resident of Hazel Park?
You gotta be one.
By law, you have to be. I'm not, but.
We don't hold that against.
Oh, whatever.
Hey, George, you back?
If I could ask one more question.
One more rebuttal.
Brought up. How come only those streets? Is there a higher percentage of empty houses?
Yeah, I, but basically what I'd looked at was the, what's called a lower mod income statistic, which basically shows what percentage of the, based on the census from the county is a lower percentage of low to moderate income folks and that have two or three, two or more vacant lots on those streets.
There, there's criteria, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dumb it down.
Yeah.
There's specific criteria in order to be eligible for an NEZ in, in generally low income areas like that. So once they, they have to meet a certain criteria, which the entire city doesn't meet. You can't make the entire city an NEZ. So, so Jeff went through very diligently to find which, which areas of our community were in need of this benefit and were eligible.
They, so they, they matched the numbers.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Name and address, please, for the record.
Joe Conley, twenty two eighty four Harvard Road, Berkeley, Michigan. I, I am in possession of six rental properties in this city. And one's on East George, one's on West George, one's on Bernard. And this is the first I heard of any of this. And so I'm kind of concerned and wondering how much more on these streets, other sections of those streets, might this go to?
This is all we're proposing at this time.
Oh, okay. I, I mean, I got the impression that it was going to extend further.
There's a limited amount of space that an NEZ can be in a certain community. So it can only be at max like ten percent of the community.
Percentage.
Yeah, yeah, there's a certain percentage. It's ten percent for new building, new building facilities. And then there's a greater percentage if we're doing rehab ones. Right now, we are not proposing a rehab one, this is currently just a new build one. That is one we might look at in the future for rehab ones, but really, right now, we're just looking at new builds.
So there's been a lot of building already in the city that I've noticed. So these builders that have already put homes up recently, they didn't get this benefit?
There's potentially a six month look back, but that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jake Slevat, sixteen twenty East Hayes. I just wanted to come up and express some support for what I'm hearing right now, after looking through what I've been able to look through in a short amount of time in the, the state law, after hearing the arguments in favor, taking a look at the, the areas that are proposed here. I do think this is a really good idea, because we have a shortage of family-sized housing, and we have a surplus in that area of vacant lots. And as it goes, the property taxes on the new builds are gonna be a lot higher than, than we want them to be for these to be attainable homes that people are gonna want to live in for a long time. So I just wanted to come up and, and register some support for that, and to say I really don't foresee the planning commission that we have approving any kind of rezoning related to this for building multifamily developments in those areas, on those residential streets. I really don't see the, the ZBA approving variances for that. So I think we're gonna get the desired result here, if, if this goes to pass, in that we're gonna have new homes, we're gonna have less vacant lots in those areas, and people are gonna be able to afford those taxes. And I wholeheartedly support that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So in the resolution that I bring forth to you on February twenty-fifth, I could remark that basically we are looking for a single-family detached residential in every area except Annabelle, too.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, we can do that, and that should allay anybody's concerns about that.
I think that's a valid concern, and I think that's nice to address.
John Reacham, one seventy-three West Evelyn. I still have no idea, I didn't get anything in the mail. I have no idea what this even.
It doesn't affect you, one seventy-three West Evelyn is not affected, it's.
So I have nothing to worry about.
It's between Ford and Cal, or West End.
So, okay, all right.
Yep.
Anybody else? See you, coming.
Hi, thank you, April Beaton, seventy-nine East Annabelle. And I just wanted to express a concern, while I am ultimately in favor of a new build, obviously, across the street, as opposed to a parking lot and a vacant school building. There was mentioned earlier, proposal A and Headley. I am a relatively new homeowner in the city, and my taxes are already creeping close to that nine-thousand dollars that you had talked about. And my concern is that while this will make new builds more attainable for new families, that my taxes that are already creeping higher, though it will increase my home value, are going to make it unaffordable in that regard. And that ultimately, existing homeowners are going to end up subsidizing new residents while making the city unaffordable for ourselves.
Your taxes at this point, what you're paying, you know, you're paying a lot.
I know.
I'm not, and I'm not saying, but it can only go up, the rate of inflation or no more than five percent is the way Headley is written in proposal A.
At this point, Prop A and Headley is in your benefit, and it'll, it's gonna, it's now slowed down. The, the increase of your taxes.
Lot of money.
So.
If you look at your, you just gotta estimate, everybody, tax, it's not a bill, but.
Yeah, I know.
Your SEV and your tax.
Just a little bit of time every day.
Don't think about it.
I can't look at it too much every day.
Your SEV has gone up, whatever, thirteen percent, the taxable value has not, right?
So she'll be capped from this time forward.
Yeah, you've been capped.
The taxable value will go up a rate of inflation.
Okay.
It won't, when the property values here are going up ten, twelve, thirteen percent, your tax bill is not going up.
Which was point zero nine percent.
The, the tough thing for you, though, is when you bought your house, your house uncapped, and your taxes went up significantly more than the previous homeowners. And the unfortunate thing for the city of Hazel Park is, you're paying all that much more money in taxes, and for the city of Hazel Park, there is a net benefit to us of zero. Because what we had to do then, the Headley amendment kicked in, and we had to give everybody a very teeny-tiny decrease in their tax rates, which are already capped by Prop A, at five percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. So for all of these pop-ups to occur.
You're making her eyes glaze.
I know.
But this is the challenge.
No one's following me.
I didn't even need anyone to talk back to me, I was like, went on the microphone.
But it's a big challenge.
But, but I want to explain it to everybody, because everybody thinks, yeah, you know, damn city's raising my taxes up, we don't even get any of that money. We have to lower the tax rates to offset that, because we can't get more than the rate of inflation. That's why this whole thing is absolutely broken. I mean, I would rather see them cap the pop-ups or something like that, that makes more sense, we're trying to get Lansing to do something with the enablement.
They've been pushing up for twenty years, and they still don't listen.
It's, it's a mess.
It doesn't make sense. We all, it's fundamentally broken, if this is your first meeting, Ed says that at every meeting. This system is broken, this system does not make sense, it is not equitable across the board. It is a serious problem, it is a challenge for everybody, residents, for, for us to budget, all of that. So you do have the option at any point in time, if you look at your bill, you can dispute it, you can have a review, if you think that they, they've valued your home at more than it should be valued at. I think that.
No, I.
Well, I, in the future.
I don't think that the home is valued more than it should be, or I'm not up here to say that I want to pay less, I mean, we all want to pay less in taxes, I'm not arguing like to specifically pay less. I just want to mention that the concern is that if it does continue to increase, and we have dozens of neighbors that are paying significantly less than us, it may increase the value of our houses, number one, but they're going to be less appealing than a new build that's ten feet away. So not only are we continuing to pay much higher than that, making things a little bit more unaffordable, but our ability to sort of like move around that, or to come up with an alternate plan for like our personal selves, is just let down. Which, again, is not to say that I oppose the build across the street at all. It, it'll be way better to look at than an empty school. Yeah, I, people have an attachment to the school, but, but I don't, so there's that. But just to express the concern that it will not be equitable, and maybe there's no way around that, but I want to make sure that it's known.
They, they will catch up, though, they will, they will catch.
Oh, everything does.
That, that it's only a temporary tax break, it's not permanent, and that tax break is not capped. So they keep catching up.
Grad, there's a gradual increase.
Full amount after six to eight years.
April, I feel that your, I feel that your sentiment is what is expressed and thought by a lot of people here. I do think that there is an issue when lenders and real estate agents are not explaining how tax uncapping works to new home purchasers, because I know when I purchased my home, although it was almost eighteen years ago, nobody explained to me, and my home had previously been a rental. Nobody explained to me, and when my tax bill came, then my house payment went up two-hundred dollars, and I was like, whoa, I wasn't prepared for that. And that was, you know, per month, it, it changes your kind of ability to do other things in your life. And at some point, it could price you out of your home, so I absolutely understand that fear wholeheartedly, because I experienced it myself, and I feel probably many here have, because I know Amy bought.
When I lived in Ferndale previously, yeah, the, the taxes on my home had uncapped, it completely caught us off guard, and I had to go to Bank of Mom and say, I'm, I've been in the house for a year and I'm about to lose it, so.
I think that is a very valid point, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because I, I do think that people need a better understanding of that, and I do think that that's a failure on many levels, not, not just.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, support.
Yeah. But I do think that this is, I, I'm glad that you came and brought that up, because I think it's important.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Hello, good evening, my name is Anja Vrid, I live at forty-one West Milton Avenue. And I would like to say for the record, I have personally not received any notification in the mail about this new neighborhood enterprise zone, so, and actually, we had a ZBA meeting on February fifth, and I voiced my concern to Jeff and asked him actually about some information, he told me he would send me information via email, I have not received anything. So in the meantime, I had to go online, go to the WIBBIS city website and find out what I can find, basically, in regards to this neighborhood enterprise zoning, and was able to find on the master plan, that the master plan, which is listed there, is from the year two thousand. I've not been able to find any updated information besides the letter, which was sent on December twenty-sixth, with some zoning information, what has been laid out on the map by Jeff Campbell. And these areas don't match with the Sidwells, I looked at properties and Sidwell numbers, and these markups on the zoning, their properties left off, other properties, I don't know, it, it just doesn't match, so.
There were some corrections that were noted by the assessor as well, that have been made. Basically, there were a few Sidwells that were wrong, there were a few addresses where there were some things, it's a number of addresses, that is my fault, those have been corrected. There's no vote tonight on this specific issue, but basically, it's on those streets where it is included, it's any street that is zoned, single-family residential. The ones that might be zoned parking, I'm not going to create a non-conforming use, where then they could build a, a, a single-family home that would be non-conforming, that just wouldn't make sense. But basically, there will be a corrected one up there tomorrow, with everyone's corrected, the corrected Sidwell numbers and the corrected addresses as well.
And then, is there any plans, I mean, unfortunately, we had a meeting, the master land use plan, there was a workshop done before last year, and these things, they were not laid out to us or made available, that we see actually areas and, and zonings and, and.
Well, it, it doesn't change anything from a zoning perspective, it's called the neighborhood enterprise zone, that doesn't mean it's a zoning change, per se. And at the time, the NEZ wasn't as prevalent, there was some talk about how much the taxes were for new build homes. It was actually finding the economic development tool to make this a reality, which took a significant amount of time, and was also brought forth to us by the folks who are proposing the one on, who were at the ZBA meeting proposing that meeting as well. So it's been a collective effort, and it just, just because it wasn't brought up at the workshop that was previous, it doesn't change anything in regard to what the design of, of the neighborhood might actually be.
So is there anything we can get a guarantee on, what is planned in the neighborhood, what type of buildings will be built there?
Well, as we indicated, as I indicated in the, the proposed resolution that I'm going to put forth for them, it'll all be single-family dwellings, detached, single-family dwellings, so like the existing houses that are there already, per code existing. So the, the required code for anything, any new build home in Hazel Park will still apply there, and it must be single-family detached if they want to get the certificate.
Okay, and just because I'm, I'm looking at that master land use plan, and there was also a go, according to the survey, walkable downtown areas, that's what we all want, obviously, we want a nicer neighborhood and nicer downtown area. But there is also talked about the corridor. Consider incorporation of new mid-to-high-rise housing into the downtown area.
Yeah, I would not consider this, the, the, the one on the south anyway, that's why we're proposing single-family detached, because that's not exactly what I would consider, the middle of the proposed downtown area on Bernard or any of those streets. The ones on Annabelle, they're adjacent immediately to John R., and there are other Woodward Heights multifamily units and/or apartments within that district, that's why I think that one makes sense, and the other ones, single-family detached housing is the one that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that, obviously. And, yeah, that's good, so let me see what else I had here. So does that mean for the existing homeowners in these areas, there will be not any change in regards to the property?
No.
Taxes, values?
The, the values might go up, that is the only thing, your taxes will not be affected, other than what normally already exists there. So we're not changing any laws for the existing homeowners.
Are there already any plans in regards to the empty lots, do you have any developers already asking for building these homes, is there anything?
Not at this time, no, I don't have anything existing. And, and frankly, some of them are owned by, as Ms. Holland mentioned, a delinquent owner, and some of them are owned by the county, and some of them are owned by us. We would like to not own them forever, and I don't think the county would like to own theirs forever, so I think they're, you know, they'd have to meet the existing standards that are set forth in seventeen, chapter seventeen point three-six of single-family detached dwellings.
And is Landure going to be building these homes there also?
No, none, none at all.
All right. I think that's all I had right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't, address, please.
Hello, Josh Wood, four three six West George. I was just looking for a little bit of clarity on the, for the improvement I would like to make to the house, there's like structural water damage to the roof, so that was going to cost more than seven, seventy-five hundred that I think was in the proposal for.
We're not doing it for improved projects, so it's just new facilities. So we might look at that in the future, that might not help you, because it depends on when you'd actually do the work. But basically, at this time, we're just looking at new buildings.
Okay. We're trying to infill to make the, make it more, over the, back, back when the recession was hit, we had to tear down a lot of houses. People just walked away, left them to this deplorable shape. We have a lot of vacant lots, we also have a few houses that linger through, and people rehabbed, and they turn out to be beautiful homes. So in the process, we're trying to infill those homes, and try to get developers to do so with having the incentive of the tax rate.
So nothing with the rehabilitation?
Give our, give our residents a little bit of an issue.
Okay.
A break, sorry. Tired, it's been a long day. Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing for NEZ. Ministry of Reports, Mr. Campbell, you want to make some?
Yeah, basically, this first reading of the ordinance, which, which is a amendment adding a section for chapter fifteen, it basically says, and this is required under the New Enterprise Zone Act, that the building official will inspect the property that might receive, might be eligible for an NEZ certificate to make sure it meets with all building and code standards.
I'll move approval of the neighborhood enterprise zone on the first reading.
Support.
Discussion, any more discussion? You want the part, you were saying that a single-family only, you want?
Yeah, that's not on this part, this is, this is just a part of, we have to pass an.
It's just part one of two.
No, yeah, well, this isn't even part of two, this is just basically saying that in order for us to be eligible to get the NEZ, we have to pass something saying we will inspect the properties.
Right, this is, this is an agreement to inspect. That'll be a complete separate resolution, that he will include the verbiage on the.
I worry adding it.
Detached housing.
Any dissension? Motion passes. Takes us to Ministry of Reports, number two, consideration of a temporary license.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the administration is recommending granting a temporary license for adult use to Safety in Compliance Facility Steadfast LLC.
I'm of approval of the temporary license for Steadfast LLC. Let's hang it.
Dissension, discussion?
A quick discussion, like I stated at the last meeting, when we're, if we're gonna start getting these temporary license requests, I wanted to make sure that, that they were in business and in good standing and everything. So I just want to thank Jeff for on short notice this morning, confirming this business is in fact open, they've been operating, they're in good standing with the state, the city, and everybody. So I'm comfortable with this one.
Any more? Any dissension, hearing none, motion passes. Places boards, commissions, we're gonna get back with, to us at the next meeting. Those recommendations, tabled items, seeing none.
Can I make a request regarding boards and commissions? I was just thinking, I was going through some of the old applications we have, and because they've been kind of piling up over the past year for some of the commissions. I'm wondering if maybe we can schedule interviews, it's a good problem to have, but for once, for some of our, our boards, we do have more applicants than we have openings. So I'm wondering if maybe if we schedule the study.
Interviews?
I would like to get to know, I mean, are we just gonna pick a name off a list?
I think that's what the administration needs to do, they need to have the, take the, take a moment and kind of go through the interview process of the application.
Well, I, I don't understand why, I mean, we couldn't set up a study session and.
Never done interviews.
We've never had this problem before. Things are changing.
Twenty years ago, maybe.
So I, I just, my. So, I just, my suggestion was maybe we have a study session to invite the people that are interested in being appointed when we've got such a large number to confirm that they're still interested, get to know them a little bit, so we can.
Again, we do need to make some appointments to some boards at the end of the month, for sure. What I would suggest to try to maybe even this out and that might make sense for everyone is if we did have a study session and we gave, maybe show up a half hour early, do a quick study session, let the applicants for boards and commissions know that we are considering making appointments and give them some time to appear before council, introduce themselves and talk about why they might want to be on the board. I think that might be, that might be an equitable compromise, it's up to you guys, I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Do that, I don't think a half hour is going to be sufficient time.
Well, you know, again, come up and.
Six relative to seven, I guess.
Come up and, you know, introduce yourself and if they get done early, give them, you know, three minutes to introduce themselves and if, just like we do for public discussion and if anybody has any questions, the council can follow up with, you know, questions to the applicants on that and then based upon that, proceed then to make appointments.
Yes, for one board, we've got two to three openings and we've got six or plus applicants and I don't know all of these people, so I'd feel more comfortable getting to know them.
Let's, this is the first meeting in February.
I don't have to do it.
We got second meeting in February. Why don't we do this at six o'clock on the second, on the next meeting?
Yep.
Meet at six, any other, any applicant, if you can get contact to them.
We'll send them information if they're still interested in.
While we're, while we're speaking of contacting applicants.
I was just gonna mention that.
Did you take her sticky note?
No, I didn't actually physically take it, but I am going to, but I am going to comment on this because it's something all of us have discussed. We would like to, I would like to, and I know some other people on this board have mentioned this as well, there's no email addresses included on this application.
We can.
So, I would like to make a motion to officially include.
We can, you know what, all you need to do, your wishes are.
I will support that motion.
Jimmy, put the email addresses on the thing.
That's a motion?
Yep.
Good, anyone, everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so you know, somebody might not put their email on.
And that's okay.
They don't have to.
No, I know.
They don't have to, it's not required.
No, I know, I'm just saying. I agree, I agree.
Send out one email to everybody to invite them instead of now he's got to call everybody.
No, it would be nice too if we did have an email list of all the boards and commissioners because sometimes, as you know, council, I will text you guys all an update if there is something that's happening in the community and it'd be nice to have a contact list of all the boards and commissioners, so if we need to contact them, if there is something of an emergency or expedient nature that we feel they need to be briefed on or know something about, then we could do that, so it's not a bad idea.
Okay, takes us down to six o'clock, next meeting, we're good, right? Okay. New business, anyone up here have any new business they want to bring up? Well, I do want to bring some new business up. We had a lot of people in white suits over at the Hazel Park racetrack, dug a couple barrels, was there anything out there, we had Eagle over there, the contractors today told us that everything's good, so give us an update.
We don't have an update yet, they found a suspicious thing over there, so they're testing it. This is a thing to do with the city of Madison Heights is issue whatsoever. We don't even know that there is an issue yet. If there is an issue, it will be contained and it will be properly remediated because they are a quality company that did exactly what they were supposed to do when they encountered a suspicious material.
Just wanted to bring it up for the general public so they know what's going on.
In case anybody is aware of this, the situation is well at hand, Eagle has been informed, all the appropriate state and federal notifications have been met, every safety precaution will be taken and any contaminants that are found, if in fact any contaminants are found, will be remediated appropriately and properly before any further construction takes place. So, this is the difference between a quality company that is very responsible and wants to be a good corporate citizen, as opposed to Gary Sayers, who was just a jerk.
So, we've all heard the Gary Sayers story, so I'm not going to elaborate on that.
Just a very.
We did have the meeting at Madison Heights High School, they had us all up there, we did get a lot of information from Eagle and a lot of other agencies up there, so it actually benefited us to see what's going on.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll remind everybody here, those of us who've been in Hazel Park for a long time, some of us our entire lives, we know the history of that site and that site is built on the old Highland Park dump, so we are well aware that there were significant contamination present on the site and that's why this company is prepared to mitigate and properly remediate any of those substances or potential contaminants.
Just want to make it out in the air for everybody, thank you.
No pun intended.
Yeah.
But they are doing air quality testing, they're doing the full boat, they're doing it right.
So, anyways, Thursday, between four and seven, be at the rec center, stop by, make your complaint to the MDOT, tell them we don't want all of our bridges down at the same time, we do need to get across town somehow with a fire truck and get our children to school. Okay? It takes us communications from department heads. Mr. Campbell?
No.
I didn't.
And our DPW director, he was there at the meeting as well.
Mayor and council, I'd also like to invite the community and business owners to come to the open house Thursday, the rec center, four to seven. Just so everybody's aware, MDOT's timetable is to demo Myers Bridge, Harry Pedestrian Bridge, John R. Bridge and Woodward Heights Bridge, all at the end of this month. Try to visualize the impact on this community, our safety, public safety, schools, everything, this will be a big impact on this community. This will leave Eight Mile open and Nine Mile open and that'll be pretty congested. So, just want everybody to be aware of that, if you can please come out and express your feelings on that.
And it's a hundred and twenty-day process, they're telling us and.
Or Woodward Heights only, a hundred and fifty days.
A hundred and fifty days for the other two and they'll be working on it in conjunction.
We know how their timeframe goes.
We all know how many of those timeframes are.
I'm from the state of Michigan, trust me.
Got a pothole to sell? Anyways.
Some dirt to fill it.
Also, just a reminder, when it does snow and DPW has to go out and treat the roads, Nine Mile from Dequinter to Pilgrim, we will still be using sand and that salt because of the new concrete. Also, the north end of John R. from Ten Mile down to just south of Woodward Heights, the same treatment, so when we call trucks in, there is a truck that goes out with sand and applies sand and if anybody's aware of that, sand does not have quite a melting chemistry to it as salt does. So, we have put signs out, just want people to be aware and drive cautiously through these roads and these things. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. It's closure.
Does the chief have anything to say or?
Didn't stand up. Thank you very much. It's closure.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first of all, just a second, what you've said and what Tom Jones said about the bridges, Mayor Webb and Tom Jones and myself did attend a meeting with MDOT, we strongly objected to having all three bridges down at the same time and we hope that they listen to us and that they will respond accordingly and stagger those bridge demolitions somewhat. Hazel Park is cut in half by I-75 and anything like that really creates a hazard, it creates extreme difficulty for our residents and even worse, it creates extreme hardship for our first responders who in situations respond when seconds are critical, to save lives and preserve the safety of our residents. So, we hope that they listen to us, we know that this has to be done. For the record, Hazel Park was one of three communities that opposed this project, we are formally on record as opposing the Eight Mile Widenening Project and it is for just such a reason as this, that we felt that that money would be better spent on local roads across the state of Michigan, including here in Hazel Park, rather than on this project. I would like to take this opportunity to express my condolences to Melissa Schwartz and her family, the passing of her husband Bruce, he fought a very valiant battle against a horrific disease, pancreatic cancer, and we all wore the bracelets and the purple ribbons and unfortunately, we did not get the result that we wanted. Reminded me when Jeff Campbell and I, we were meeting with Congressman Dan Killey and he was aggressing, aggressing a group of people about the future of this country and he said, "Well, if we can do two things, if we can cure cancer and cure Alzheimer's disease, we'll have just about enough money to do anything that we need to do as a nation." And I think those were very prophetic statements, if we are a country that can pull off a Manhattan project, if we are a country that can pull off a moonshot, I think that as a planetary civilization, we need to come together and we need to make it an international mission to finally find a cure for cancer because it's absolutely horrible what that family went through and they have my deepest sympathies. And I want the residents of Hazel Park to know that we'll be closing most departments tomorrow at four o'clock to give folks an opportunity to visit the funeral home and pay their respects to the family. There will be a window open for payments and the water department will be open, but all other departments at four o'clock will close tomorrow and give our employees an opportunity to pay their respects. It's at Madison Heights and.
It's a Hopcroft.
It's Hopcroft, Hopcroft and Madison Heights at John R. thirteen. Think of the name. Finally, Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to meet with the historical commission and explain to them the situation, I will have Jimmy Finkley notify them of a meeting time and I'll be happy to sit down with them, I will either use Amanda or Jeff Campbell to sit with me as city attorney, if any members of council wish to participate, we will make them aware of it as well and explain to them exactly where we're at. Councilperson Aubrey Sullivan.
Sorry, I'm very tired, I had a long day at work.
They've melded into one human being.
A long day.
I think it's great that people were struggling to find a place to sit, good problem to have. I love how many people came out, I apologize if anybody didn't get a notice regarding the NEZs, but I think it's fantastic to see so many people come out concerned, have questions, you heard a rumor, you came out, you asked, we appreciate that. So, I think it's great to see everybody really participate in the process and come out and get some information, I hope we were able to answer everybody's questions, if you have more questions, please feel free to contact city manager's officer or us and we will work to get you an answer.
And again, you've been, thank you for your help and assistance on this, you're actually one of the top experts in this field and you really are and you know it.
You exaggerate.
But it is true, you really were the one that gave us the foundational information to go looking for the other information to be able to pull this off, so thank you. We're sympathetic to everybody here because it is a broken system, it's terrible, the property tax system in Michigan is terrible, it needs to be addressed, the entire system of municipal finance, again, I say it, it's fundamentally broken at every meeting. So, we're sympathetic, but we have to live by it too, it's the state.
Councilperson McFall?
I would like to just reiterate what Amy said, it is great seeing so many people here because oftentimes, there's only a few people out there to look at. I also would like to let everybody know that our first provisioning center, Marijuana Provisioning Center, actually is officially open, Breeze on the north section of John R. We had the ribbon cutting this morning, so it's nice having a brand-new business in that section of town, so.
Newly rehabilitated building.
Yes, exactly.
With a significant number of Hazel Park residents as employees.
Yeah, about eighteen.
Eighteen, I was gonna say eighteen.
Yeah, they made Hazel, higher Hazel Park first, when possible, their priority and you can see by the high number of Hazel Park residents working there. That's very good.
That's a molecular.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My condolences also go out to Ms. Alyssa Schwartz and Bruce's family. So, the words of Tom Salmon, "If you love somebody, tell them, if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day and have a happy Valentine's Day." And see you Saturday at the bowling with the firefighters.
I also want to express my condolences to Alyssa Schwartz and her family, Bruce's family and friends, losing a partner, a lifelong partner can never be an easy thing, so it makes my, makes my heart very sad for her and her family. I want to thank everybody for coming out today, I want to thank people for bringing up rumors they've heard, things that they've, they've been told that are incorrect, that we could give proper information, it's important to know and understand the facts behind why things are done instead of just the supposition, which happens oftentimes amongst neighbors. The rumors can really put a damper on things, so we try to avoid those here. Thank you everybody for coming out and as Andy said, have a safe and happy Valentine's Day, don't forget to Uber if you have too much to drink.
Or the Valentine's Day?
Valentine's, it's on a Friday, you think people aren't going out and drinking?
Wow, okay.
I was a bartender for a very long time, Valentine's Day was one of our busiest nights, I'm telling you. Yeah, it's on a Friday. Good dates are bad, Uber home safely.
I'd like to also give my condolences to Alyssa Schwartz and her family, it's a hard thing to get through. Never really quite get over it, you lose a loved one, you always think of them somewhere in your path, in the future, as how great a life they had. With that being said, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening and enjoying the process of democracy at best and arguing, facilitating, trying to find a equilibrium to some degree of civility here. And I think we've done that on the process many, many times here with different conversations, different quotes, different things, we try to work through every issue that we have and give all the information we can possibly give.
Mr. Mayor, if anybody wants to find out more about the Headley Amendment and Proposal A and Tax Act.
Online.
They're more than welcome to.
You can find it anywhere.
And I will give them a lesson and I will talk at length and I will make their eyes spin.
That being said, we have an exact session for.
I think people have to leave, so I can, I can, okay, well, then let's go into a very brief.
I want to say one more thing, thank you for coming out this evening and I do have to say happy birthday to my wife on Friday, Valentine's Day, I get hit twice on that. It costs twice as much, just kidding, I love my wife, she, we've been married for a long, thirty, forty years, so we're doing great.
You probably shouldn't phrase it as getting hit twice.
Yeah.
After you've been married as long as we have, you can kind of phrase things a little differently. Now, if you've been married seven years, you may not want to, okay, but you can still enjoy each other's company and banter, have fun and have a good marriage, so thank you for coming out. Motion to adjourn to exact session.
For purposes of.
Pending litigation.
Uh, pending litigation.
Support.
Dissension, discussion, we're gone.